Good evening and welcome to our board meeting tonight. It is January 12th, 2022. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting. We would like to call the meeting to order. And would you rise and join us with pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We're glad to see you here this evening. Before we start the meeting, we need to do a roll call to establish a quorum. We'll ask Callie to call the roll.
Albright.
Here.
Coulson.
Here.
Isaacs.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Magnuson.
Here.
Mohammed.
Here.
Vernig.
Here.
Welcome. We've got seven people here that establishes a quorum. The first thing we are going to do this evening is swear in our new board members. And we're going to give them the oath of office. So Art Coulson, Sidalk and Mohammed and Bianca Vernig, you have family here, I know, this evening. Would your family come forward and stand with you as we swear you in and give you your oath of office? Nice that your families can be here tonight because this is a family. Art's got an excuse. He's got family getting married and all kinds of crazy things at their house. But we are so welcome and so happy that you can be here because this certainly is a family issue and a family endeavor that you are embarking on. So thank you all for being here to support your mom and your dad. With that, I will try to read this slowly and you can repeat after me. I indicate your name.
I am Vernon.
Have been elected to the Office of School Board for Independent School District 196.
Have been elected to the Office of School Board for Independent School District 196.
Do hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board.
And that I will discharge faithfully the offices of school board.
A school board member to the best of my judgment and abilities.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations to all three of you and welcome to the 196 family. Congratulations. Next on the agenda is the approval of our agenda this evening. There are no additions or deletions. Everything is as set before you. So board, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Move to approve, second.
A motion by Suchan, a second by Art. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven zero vote. Next this evening is the election of officers. And we'll ask for nominations for chairperson, vice chair, clerk and treasurer, the four officers that we have. First of all, we'll ask for a nomination for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Jackie Magnuson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, Cory has nominated Jackie Magnuson for chair. All in favor of Jackie continuing to be chair indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven zero vote. Next, we'll take nominations for vice chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Corey Johnson.
Joel has nominated Corey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Suchan. We have a nomination for Corey for vice chair. All, is there any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Corey being vice chair indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven zero vote. Next is the nomination for clerk. Do we have a nomination for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Suchan Isaacs.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Suchan for clerk. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, we have a nomination for Suchan to be nominated as clerk. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven zero vote. Our last one this evening is nomination for treasurer. I'd look for a nomination for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Art for the role of a treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to nominate Art as treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote for Art to continue as treasurer. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That concludes our nominations for our slate of officers for the coming year. And thank you. Next on our agenda, we have recognition. We have recognition by the superintendent. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck to the 22 District 196 high school students who qualified for the state debate tournament, which will be held online later this week. And congratulations to the esports team from Apple Valley High School on winning the Minnesota Varsity League season with an undefeated record. Members of the team are Nate Junker, Jack Hanson, Michael Heron, Henry Lee and Santiago Lala. Lastly, I want to thank all District 196 employees for everything they're doing to keep us in school learning in person after winter break. Our employees are overcoming daily challenges caused by growing staffing shortages in virtually every area, including transportation, food service, teachers, paraprofessionals. For example, today Coordinator Karen Dayon and her Transportation Department employees worked tirelessly to cover open routes in order to get all kids to school and back home safely. Some districts have had to switch to distance learning because of staffing shortages. We are monitoring the situation daily and we have a plan in place in case we would need to switch to distance learning. But our goal is to continue learning in person if at all possible. This week, teachers who are peer leaders in our QCOM program stepped up to leave their duties aside for the week and help fill our classroom vacancies. The health and safety of our learning communities remains a top concern. And we are monitoring our school COVID-19 cases very closely. We have a mask wearing policy in place. We have distributed KN95 masks to interested employees. And all learning spaces have HEPA air purifiers that filter and remove viruses several times an hour. District leadership teams also meet daily to discuss our current situation. We recommend parents have alternate plans for students to learn at home if a brief shift to online learning would be necessary. A great way to stay updated is downloading Here Comes the Bus, an app that allows users to track their child's school bus, and opting to receive official District 196 text messages. Learn more about these options on our website, district196.org. And be prepared that we may have some. We'll be doing everything to get kids to school, but the timeliness may vary. So be sure to have that app if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the special communication requests. Under special communication requests, people who want to speak during this time may submit a form at least five days in advance. Ten speakers will receive up to four minutes to share comments. If there are more than 10 requests, a lottery is conducted to determine the 10 speakers. Speakers may not allow their name and give their time to others. And we use a timer for public comments and will remind speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining. We expect speakers to finish their remarks when the time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the school board or the district. The audience is expected to remain calm, civil, and not disrupt the speakers from being heard. Speakers, when you come to the podium, please share your name and your connection to the school district. Our first speaker this evening is Teresa Jebrowski.
Good evening. Hi. Did you get my, you did get my paper?
Yes. The notes in front of us are, go with Teresa's.
Never had a microphone like this. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Jacobowski and I'm a school bus driver in my ninth year. Today I stand before you as a steward of SEIU Local 284, representing over 250 employees in the Transportation Department. Thank you, board members, for giving me this opportunity to talk with you. I've always seen our school district as being one of the best. You have been a great employer to work for. A testament to that is the longevity of bus drivers and chaperones in our department. Ours is not an easy job, yet we have drivers who have been here over 40 years. These career drivers and chaperones have dedicated their professional lives to District 196. Allow me to introduce them. Would you please stand up, all the drivers who have worked more than seven years in the district? The people you just saw are the backbone. The people you just saw are the backbone of the Transportation Department. They are reliable and can be counted on to be mentors, trainers and supporters of the newer busing staff and office staff in unmeasurable ways. Parents know them, rely on them, and most importantly, trust them with their children. They are the reason we are here before you today. As you're aware, we're still in contract negotiations, but they have stalled. They've stalled because we need a more equitable distribution of monies among the 250 employees in this department. I gave you a chart if you wanted to look at that. This is where we stand today in our negotiation for driver pay. 66 cents is a raise all drivers would receive this year. New employees, having worked zero to six years, will get a bump over that yearly raise between $1.58 and $3.17. Workers who have been here seven, eight, nine years will receive an extra 60 cents. Already you can see a big problem, but here's the real kick in the pants. Drivers who have been here 10 to 40 years will receive an extra five or six cents. The same inequitable wage increase is also happening to the chaperones. There's no way for us to fix this discrepancy in negotiations. The big bump in wages for the half of our employees, who are one through seven, have come from you. We are thankful for that large pay increase. We understand you responded to market wages and are thankful for that. But you only considered half of the staff, thinking this would fix the staffing shortage. But now morale is at an all time low and drivers and chaperones with longevity are being undervalued and they are angry and frustrated with this job. They too have an option of leaving and going to neighboring busing companies that will pay $3 to $5 more than is currently being offered and presented to you. We started the school year with 24 routes without drivers. Today we are at 34. More people are leaving than are being hired. This department is about to crash. Soon we will be like St. Paul and Minneapolis, calling parents and telling them busing is no longer available for your students. The solution for this problem falls in your lap. We are asking you to open the purse strings just again and give a significant bump to the rest of the staff, which have already proven they will stay if shown they are valued and financially rewarded for their work. And if you take care of the employees with longevity, the new employees have incentive to stay as well. This is a time sensitive request. As long as this contract is in negotiation, no one gets a pay bump. I would hazard a guess that everyone who's been hired this year has been told that they will receive a pay bump. And how long will they stay if that doesn't come about? It seems to me that your legacy as a school board can go two ways. You can be remembered as a board who tried to fix the problem and failed because half of the transportation employees were financially ignored and the exodus of.
Yep. Yep, that's because your time is up. So just finish real quick. You've got about three more words.
You can be remembered as a school board that acted quickly and saved the Transportation Department with decisive action from you. We can once again be the district that has the best pay and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We cut into your. Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Sylvester.
Good evening, Superintendent Krieger and members of the board. My name is Suzanne Sylvester. I am a career school bus driver with ISD 196. I am in my 36th year of driving with the district. ISD 196 Transportation has been limping along since the beginning of the school year. Our office staff and our mechanics have been driving AM and PM routes almost daily. This is unsustainable. Our Transportation Department is broken. Please help us fix it. We all know and feel the importance of hiring new employees. We as drivers, chaperones and crossing guards feel it is important to retain our current employees. The way to retention is through better pay. No more hire and train two new employees only to lose two fully trained and reliable employees. Please help us stop the revolving door. All school bus drivers must have a special driver's license to do this special job. We are in very high demand all over this nation. Please help us all to feel valued. Experience needs to be compensated equally as much as a new employee. We are not simply a warm body behind the wheel. We are caring, intelligent, thoughtful, compassionate, professional individuals who are serious about our profession. Many of us have chosen to be career school bus employees because we love our job. We love working with the kids because they make us feel valued. We as employees would like to be shown that we are valued employees through equitable pay for our overall years of service. The school district is wanting to raise the starting wage several dollars per hour. We are completely in favor of this. We are desperately in need of additional new employees. However, those of us who have been here diligently working for many years through everything deserve an equitable per hour increase as well. We help out everywhere, safely transporting students every day. Every day. Experienced drivers do not have to be trained. That's all done. Experienced drivers can jump in and cover missed routes or late call in. Experienced drivers understand and know the neighborhoods, the schools, each other's routes. We can see if students have been missed, for whatever reason, and pick them up and get them to their appropriate destination. Experienced drivers can handle being assigned an uncovered or open route, being split up and inserted into their own route, often forcing them to give up bathroom breaks or the like. A newer driver is still learning the district, concentrating on their bus driving and working very hard just to cover their own routes safely. I totally remember how I felt back in 1987. We as a bargaining unit are not here to rob Peter to pay Paul. We are here to help our occupation to be equitable for all employees. If a driver must work two or three jobs to support their family and is burning the candle at both ends, it puts the safety of their school bus and the kids on it at risk. This is an awful thought. However, this is our reality. Let us stay the leaders, the school district others look to. Please expand your financial parameters so we can achieve an equitable contract for all of our very hardworking transportation employees. Show us we are valued. Equitable pay increases for all years of service levels. Experience needs to be compensated equally as much as the new employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker tonight is Catherine Briggs.
Good evening, Superintendent. School board members, congratulations to you new members. Co-workers, friends, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak with you regarding the contract negotiations currently happening with the transportation unit. I thought I should share with you the ideas and feelings of the people you trust to transport your children, your family, safely to and from school every day. We do understand this district needs to have the ability to hire new transportation employees to cover the ever increasing need, but not at the expense of current employees. Current employees need to be acknowledged and compensated properly. The current compensation package as offered is not enough to properly compensate those who have endured. The package covers only one small part of the transportation employees, i.e. new hires. The largest group of employees have worked for this district for five or more years. Transportation Department and its employees are a specific part of the operations of this district. As my coworkers have pointed out to you, the compensation offered to senior employees in this package is found to be wanting. This board needs to increase the compensation package parameters to compensate all transportation employees. My coworkers are a resolute and valuable group of people who arrive in any weather condition, many before 6:00 a.m. We arrive early in the winter to warm up the buses or in the summer months to open the windows to keep it cool. We are the people who have stuck with this district through the pandemic, the multiple schedule changes and closures at a significant loss of hours and financial costs to all of us in transportation. We delivered meals, transported first responders, children to daycare. We cleaned, mopped and disinfected buses. We worked split shifts, weekends, putting in 10 or more hours a day in a bus. We deal with discipline and family issues. We wipe noses, stop nosebleeds, clean up vomit and calm distraught children who are beside themselves because they left their backpack or homework at home or because no one is at the bus stop when we take them home. We continued despite the temperature. And let me tell you, have you ever been in a bus below zero or above 80 for any length of time? We continue regardless of the road conditions. The idiot drivers, in particular those drivers who cannot see a big yellow bus with flashing red lights. We helped train and mentor inexperienced drivers as well. We were there when you needed us to be. We continue to be there through each new variant, each new schedule change and during this national bus driver crises. We are the professionals at what we do for this district. We are the beginning and end to each school day. Senior drivers are coming in early and leaving late to cover open routes. I myself average between 52 and 60 hours a week driving a bus. This will continue unless you, the school board, realize that yes, there is a need for new hires at a better wage, but there is a much more specific need, which is to retain and compensate the employees you have. Those transportation professionals that have gone beyond and continue to do so for this district. Make our unit whole. Make our dedication and sacrifice worth something. Increase the compensation parameters of the package offered to transportation employees. Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Claudette Austin.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Claudette Austin. I have been a chaperone at District 196 since the 2011-2012 school year. As a group, chaperones do not feel valued. Even earlier in the meeting here, they weren't even listed as people that the school district is grateful for. So I'm just here to let the school board know some of the things we do as a chaperone. Okay, so first of all, we're generalists. We work with students from ages three to 21. We work with students from every special education program in the district. So we are taking care of a variety of students every single day. Our students have different capabilities and abilities and we need to adapt to each individual student on our bus. We know, and I'm going to tell you, we know our students because some of them we are spending hours with because of the length of their bus ride. So we really know them very well. We know their medical issues. Well, okay, let me put it this way. We need to be ready for anything because anything can happen on a bus and often does. There are medical issues on a bus. We have to watch for seizures, severe allergy indications, traffic accidents. We have to be ready to deal with a student's emotional and physical needs should anything ever happen on a school bus. And then, you know, we have to think about COVID because in the back of the school bus where we are with the children who can't all wear masks and there is no social distancing and very little ventilation on the bus. There are risks to being chaperones. Now, sometimes the students hurt us. Sometimes it's because of certain issues. But a lot of times we are injured because, you know, the student doesn't know any better. And I want to talk about my glasses. I had my glasses pulled off my face and twisted out of any kind of wearable or fixable shape. And I want to say, that student was having the best time of his life. It was so enjoyable. So we understand that we're not being injured necessarily on purpose, but we have our hair pulled. We get spit at frequently when we're buckling the students in or putting them in their car seats. We're coughed. We're this close to the student's face and they cough. I've seen our chaperones with black eyes and red marks from bite marks all over their hands. Now, we've been there, everyone before me. We've been doing all the things that the bus drivers have been doing. We were packing up 360 meal boxes to deliver to the student. We were there. On an everyday basis, we work hand in hand with the bus drivers to keep our special education students safe. I'm asking the school district and the school board to recognize the value of what chaperones do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the items of the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the December 13th, 2021 special school board meeting. We have the minutes of the December 13th, 2021 regular school board meeting. We have the minutes of the December 20th, 2021 special school board meeting. We have equity advisory council appointments. We have gifts. We have treasurer's report for November 20, 2021. We have summary of claims for November 2021. We have schedule of investments for November 2021. We have revenue and expenditure reports for November 2021. We have a personnel exhibit and we have pay rates for substitute, temporary and part-time employees. With that, are there any questions on the consent agenda or any items board members would like to pull this evening?
Can I be?
Yes, Bianca.
I need to pull item eight or abstain from voting on item eight.
Okay. We're going to pull item eight and move that down. We'll address that in just a second. So with that, any other items that board members would like to pull this evening off the consent agenda? With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item eight.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Cory, a second by Art. Any other questions or comments on that portion of the consent agenda? With that, we've got a motion by Cory, a second by Art to approve the consent agenda as outlined, minus item number eight. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven zero vote. We'll move back to the consent agenda item of the summary of claims for November 2021. And did you want to say anything about that, Bianca?
Just, no.
With that, there's no anything else that we need to know about that. With that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the summary of claims for November. With that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the Summary of Claims for November, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel, a second by Cory. Any other questions or comments? With that, we've got a motion by Joel, a second by Cory, to approve Summary of Claims for November, 2021. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
We have, that passes on a six yes vote and one abstention. So, thank you, that passes. Thank you very much. Tonight, there are no items of report. We have one item of old business, and we'll call up Christopher Yan Robshop to go over our 2021 final budget, 2021-22 final budget, easy for me to say.
Yeah, good evening, Chair Magnusson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board and the public, thank you for letting me show up here again this evening. I do not have a presentation, I just want to draw attention to the budget book that we presented at the December School Board Meeting. There have not been any adjustments that have been made to the financial information contained herein, and since this is a second reading, I would like for the board to take action in it this evening.
This is an action item this evening? Before we go into discussion, I'll ask for a motion and a second. We have a motion by Sachin, a second by Art. Are there any questions or comments on the final budget from our audience members? Seeing none, board members, questions or comments? Other than this being, this is online, so it's real easy for people to access, real easy for them to get a real good picture of the financial shape of the district. So with that, we've got a motion by Sachin, a second by Art, to approve the final budget as outlined. All in favor of the final budget indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a seven-zero vote. Thank you very much, Christopher. Next, we'll go into items of new business. Our new business item this evening is the connection preschool fees for 2022-23, and Kaia Brown will walk us through that. The action will be taken on this on February fourteenth. Oh, our Valentine's meeting.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am sharing with you tonight the first reading of the proposed Connections Preschool Fee Increases for the 2022-23 School Year. These proposed fees are based on a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size, and reflect a ten percent increase from the current year while also being lower than our neighboring districts and like-sized districts. I'll be back on February fourteenth for your approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Super, this is not an action item this evening. I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from the audience. Seeing none, questions and comments from board members? Sachin.
Kaia, would you just quickly explain, you said ten percent increase across the board, ten percent is kind of what you were proposing here?
Yes, so we increase the highest rate at ten percent, and then when you factor in the sliding fee scale, each of those rates are less than that highest rate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. We use free and reduced lunch as our benchmark for sliding scale fees. Lately, we have, and that is impacted by us not, now having, the federal government is paying for lunches for all students. How do we get around that, or how do we, are we still pushing people fill out the form for free and reduced lunch so that they can access the savings on, if you are free and reduced lunch, that, you know, your charges on some of these items would be less?
Yeah, for the free and reduced lunch application, that doesn't necessarily apply to Connections Preschool Fees, because they are three and four-year-olds. So that's why we go by the income or the poverty guidelines and family size.
Any other questions? If you have questions, you know where Kaia works, and you can get ahold of Kaia anytime. So, thank you, this will be an old business item on the fourteenth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into other action items for this evening. We've got collective bargaining agreement with Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Rave, the Clerical Association, and Tom Peterston will walk us through this.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's secretary on clerical employees. These employees, represented by the Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Clerical Association, ratified the proposed working agreement on January fifth. I'll highlight the terms of the settlement for you. The wage schedule in this agreement was increased by two point seven five percent each year. The longevity pay schedule was increased by one percent each year. The district contributions to health insurance were increased by two percent the first year and four percent the second year. The tax-deferred matching plan contributions for full-time employees was increased by two hundred dollars per year the first year and by a hundred and eighty-one dollars per year the second year. Part-time employees were increased by fifty dollars the first year and forty-one dollars per year the second year. There were some other minor language modifications, as well as housekeeping updates to the contract. The total new costs during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters you've set forth. These parameters are the same for each bargaining agreements that we're negotiating this year. On behalf of the administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
And this is an action item this evening, so before we move into discussion, I will ask for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel and a second by Cory. Are there any questions or comments on this item from the audience? Seeing none, questions and comments from board members? Looks good, pretty straightforward, and again, as you said, it falls within the parameters that the board has set at the beginning of the year. So with that, we've got a motion by Joel, a second by Cory, to approve the collective bargaining agreement with Rosemont Apple Valley Egan Rave Clerical Association. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, that passes on a seven-zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Tony Tashner with our legislative priorities.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, board members, Superintendent Krieger. I'm Tony Tashner, the Communications Director, here tonight representing our Legislative Advisory Council members, and presenting to you our proposed 2022 legislative priorities. The photo, before I move on, the photo on this slide shows, was taken last Thursday at Rosemont Middle School. We had our annual District 196 Legislative Forum event, which we do prior to each session. There were six legislators that were able to attend. Principal Eric Hanson's also in the photo, Counselor Tamara Calucci, and four eighth-grade girls who shared about their experiences at Rosemont Middle School. And I'll just also acknowledge, we've got a couple members of our Legislative Advisory Council here tonight. Kami Kramer is here, and I saw Gary Krieger earlier, and of course, members of our board. So the 2022 session of the Minnesota Legislature begins on Monday, January thirty-first, and by law, it must end by Monday, May twenty-third. This is considered a non-budgeting session, so typically more policy issues and work on bonding bill for capital projects, but as you'll see from our platform, we are not, that doesn't mean we're silent on funding issues by any means. So the, based on the forecasts that were released in December, the state is entering the session with a projected seven billion dollar plus surplus. So there's been a lot of discussion about how the state might use that surplus this coming year in supplemental funding. And 2022 is also an election year for governor, constitutional offices, I believe, and then the legislators as well. So I think there will be interest in completing their work on time, they'll be interested in getting out and starting campaigns, I think. The priorities that I'm presenting to you tonight, obviously you have not taken action on them, but we have started already our advocacy efforts. This year, I had mentioned, and again, you can see another photo on this page of our Legislative Forum that was last Thursday at Rosemont Middle School. The six legislators that were able to attend included Senators Carlson, Claussen, and Duckworth, and Representatives Berg, Hewitt, and Koznick. Some staff members and LAC members were also there, and Chairperson Magnusson was there as well. Principal Eric Hanson shared some information with the legislators about some data from a student survey that they had conducted in November, and explained how their staff was using that information to try and address some of the issues that were identified by students. He said overall, students are happy to be back in school. They were dysregulated, there were some issues, they understand that, not everything's perfect, obviously, but bottom line, they're glad to be back in school. So the next day, January seventh, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts held its annual legislative preview, which we attended, and heard from some of our legislative leaders about their ideas heading into the session. Once you take action on the priorities, and we have approved priorities, then members of the LAC and staff will take those priorities out, share them with the public, share them with staff in testimony and in meetings that we have with legislators. Our process each year starts with our legislative priorities, process begins with the Legislative Advisory Council. The LAC is a non-partisan group consisting of seven citizens, a representative from each of our other district advisory councils, student representatives from our high schools, staff, and members of the school board's Legislative Committee. Each fall, members of the LAC meet to identify possible priorities for the upcoming session. In November, the LAC held a joint meeting with members of the Budget Advisory Council. We reviewed previous year's priorities. We also reviewed the platforms of other education associations, like the Minnesota School Boards Association, Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and such, and we discussed possible priorities for the upcoming session. Using input from that meeting, as well as from the superintendent's cabinet, I drafted the proposed priorities that I'm presenting for your consideration this evening. First area of our priorities has to do with funding, and I mentioned this is not a funding year, but funding leads off our priorities. In the introduction paragraph, which you don't have, it's on the exhibit, but it's not in the presentation, but in the introduction paragraph to the priorities, we start by thanking the legislature and governor for approving general fund increases of two point four or five percent this year and two percent for next year, so for the current biennium. Nonetheless, our platform states that the biggest issues facing E-12 education continue to be the lack of adequate and predictable funding needed for planning and stability to support the quality of education Minnesota families want and each of our students deserve. So first, we ask the legislature to provide ample predictable and equalized education funding by taking the following actions. First, indexing basic education funding to inflation. The General Education Formula allowance is the single biggest source of funding school districts receive from the state. In District 196, it accounts for approximately seventy percent of our general fund revenues. The problem is, this basic funding source has lagged inflation by nearly nine percent for approximately six hundred dollars per pupil over the last twenty years. Indexing the General Education Formula would ensure school districts would at least receive inflationary increases in years going forward. Under Item B, we ask the legislature to increase equalization aid and to index the equalization formulas for growth. Equalization aid was established to equalize the impact of school taxes on homeowners and districts with lower percentages of commercial industrial property. The aid is supposed to make it so that the tax impact is the same on the owners of homes of similar values in different districts with different percentages of commercial industrial property. The problem is, the equalization formulas are not indexed for growth, so they provide a diminishing amount of aid as total property value grows over time. We ask the legislature to increase the aid and index the formulas for growth. The third item is a familiar one, to address unfunded special education costs. The state and federal governments mandate special education services, but funded just two-thirds of what it cost District 196 to provide those services last year. The other thirty-three percent totaling twenty-five point four million dollars was subsidized by the district's general fund. Specifically here, we ask the legislature to provide supplemental funding next year to hold the special education cross-subsidy at the level of the current year, and to develop a plan to phase in full funding of the state's share of special education costs. And I'll pause here, I said this is a recurring item on our agenda, it's been there literally every year for the last, I think maybe since we started the LAC. Twenty-five point four million dollars was the difference last year. If they came anywhere close to filling that cross-subsidy, it would take care of so many other issues that we talk about on here, so it's just a huge item. And lastly, in this area, we ask the legislature to provide targeted funding to help the disparate impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on students of color. We knew students had a difficult time last year during shifting learning models and distance learning, and that was confirmed in student achievement data we recently received. Again, funding is needed to address the disparate impact of the pandemic on students of color. Our second priority area is to reduce mandates and increase local control. This is also a recurring item from our list of priorities. We believe locally elected school board members and district staff are in the best position to understand and address the needs of their community and are accountable to the families for their decisions. Many existing state mandates are unfunded or underfunded and have unnecessary paperwork and reporting requirements that literally take time away from teachers being with students. We ask that the legislature reduce mandates determined to be unnecessary, oppose any new unfunded or unnecessary mandates, and increase local control and flexibility, give us the flexibility to respond in these changing times. Examples of this include, but are not limited to, the following, allowing school districts to establish school calendars that best meet the needs of their community. Right now, there's a law in the books that says you have to start after Labor Day, the only exception is if you have four hundred thousand dollars worth of construction in your district. I don't know when the law was enacted, but the four hundred thousand dollar number is completely irrelevant. Every single year, we have over four hundred thousand dollars of construction that goes on in the summer. So give school districts the ability to set their calendars. Authorize school boards to renew existing operating levies at the same or lesser amount. So this is bringing a levy referendum, an operating levy referendum, voters pass it, there's a ten-year limit, ten years expires before you get there, allow school boards to renew that. It's not a tax increase, and the data shows that ninety-nine-plus percent of these referendums that get put on the ballot because they have to, these simple renewals, are approved by voters. So it's making school districts go through that process, the time and the expense of conducting election, that ninety-nine-plus percent are approved by voters. And this is a new one, this last one on here, Item C, allow school districts to charge for all costs associated with locating, compiling, redacting, and copying data in response to requests to inspect or receive copies of government data. This year, we've been getting an increasing number of extremely large requests for data that are taking so much time, staff time, to complete, that we've hired two retired staff members to help us go through in reviewing the data. It's frustrating. Kelly Longendike, our executive admin, is the clearinghouse for those, and it's just, you don't have to have, under current law... you don't have to have, under current law, you don't have to be resident of the district to make the request. You don't have to spend a dime to make the request, you could say, I'm going to come in and inspect it. When you're contacted to tell you that the data's ready, you could say, well, I guess I'm not interested in that anymore. Never mind that we spent 10 hours getting the data ready for you. So, what this law would do, if we've made a change in the law, it would make that person making the request actually have a stake in the game. That they're gonna, they're gonna, they can, we're all about providing data, everything we do is in the public, and we're very transparent, but making us chase around and spending time on data requests that are simply meant for that purpose is frustrating. And I'll just add that AMSD has this on their platform, I think MSBA, the School Boards Association, also has this on their platform, so it's not just our district, and this has got the attention of a lot of people, and it's time just to do something about it. Third and last area of our priorities is to support a diverse and sustainable workforce of teachers and other school employees. The ability of our schools to educate kids and keep them safe each day relies on the teachers and other caring adults who work in our schools. The pandemic has created workforce issues in almost every industry, we hear about it every night, but education has been hit particularly hard with a shortage of bus drivers, chaperones, teachers, paraprofessionals, every position, everybody's included, even though I'm not naming everybody, that provide critical, mission-critical support like transportation and food service. In this area, we asked the legislature to dedicate additional funding for programs designed to increase the number of teachers of color in Minnesota and the number of students of color entering teacher preparation programs in Minnesota. We asked that the legislature maintain multiple pathways to teacher licensure and establish licensure reciprocity with other states, so we have a larger candidate pool of teaching candidates. And we asked the legislature to remove barriers and provide incentives to address the shortages of substitute teachers, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and other school staff. Some ideas that Superintendent Krieger had asked from staff members last week that we've included here, it's not an exhaustive list, but it's some, expedite the processing of teacher license applications. Pelsby, expedite that process. Allow student teachers who've completed all graduation requirements to substitute teach prior to receiving their initial teacher license. And allow districts to reduce the number of observations required for teacher development and evaluation for the 2021-22 school year. These are simple suggestions that wouldn't take a lot to enact, but would provide some staff time relief on some things temporarily. So just in summary, the LAC is bringing these proposed priorities for your consideration to take actions to provide stable and predictable funding for Minnesota schools, reduce mandates and increase local control, and support a diverse and sustainable workforce of teachers and other school employees. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and would ask for your approval of the 2022 legislative priorities.
Great, thank you, Tony, and thank you for bringing this forward on behalf of the LAC. Before we go into conversation, let's have a motion and a second, this is an action item this evening.
Is that moved?
Second. Motion by Joel, a second by Corey. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? You want to come up here? We have two minutes, and Corey will put the timer on for two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Jake Rallender, I'm a parent and resident of the district and former candidate and a future candidate for school board. As we've seen across the state, transportation has been a huge issue. I'm a little concerned that I didn't hear any talk about transportation as a legislative priority for our district. I feel like if we made this a priority for our district, it would also help other districts who are dealing with this driver and transportation shortage. It is going to be impacting us even more as we move forward, especially into next year, when we've basically promised with the district boundary change, additional transportation opportunities, and I believe that that is not just a district issue, but this is a statewide crisis that we need to address, so it should be a legislative priority and something that we're actually going to bullet point and make a priority. Number two, I want to talk about, I think that the process of voters, like going over levies and referendums and stuff, is a part of the checks and balance process, so I do not support the idea of that not being a part of the process. And while it may seem a little mundane to have to go through that process, it is there for a reason, and to establish that trust in the community that you're being good stewards of our fiscal funds that we give to you. Lastly, I think it's a big deal to limit data requests. While some of them may be frivolous, and maybe possibly, what's the right word for this, not the most sincere in their attempt to gather data, the whole point that we are a public institution and that we should be transparent by limiting any type of factor how that happens, is just adding a layer of conspiracy, which is the last thing we need in today's society. Data should be available to anybody, like I understand that if you want to provide hard copies and things like that, that there's a reasonable expense, but that comes with the job as being a public institution, that we need to provide that opportunity and those resources and that data for people, and it should be easily accessible, so no more barriers to that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience?
Jackie, could I just respond?
Yes, please.
We don't have barriers to government data, we provide data when we have requests. What we're asking for is to be able to charge reasonable costs for collecting the data. We get the requests, we fill the requests, we sometimes have people who made the request not show up, that's fine.
Can you give an example of reasonable costs?
I said compiling, compiling data, having to review an email to determine whether it fits the request or not, because it contains certain phrases, for example. So somebody needs to look at it, at that specific email, one of maybe 6,000 that were pulled that have that phrase in it. That employee has to determine whether it meets it, they also have to determine whether there's private data in that same email that needs to be redacted. So we can, we can compile public data, if this district is fine spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on public data requests, we can absolutely do that. It's not a question of whether we can do it, it's a question of what's reasonable.
Do you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars right now, and we know we spend on that?
I don't for our district, I know Rochester said they spent...
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand dollars.
I'll fill out a data report if we find out the value.
And we do have, I would say, the third item in our platform talks about a diverse and sustainable workforce. It mentions transportation.
Yes.
Bus drivers.
It does.
It's part of our platform.
It does. It does. Any other questions from the audience on the legislative priorities? Seeing none, we'll move on to board members. Sutchen.
Tony, thank you, and thank you to all the stakeholders who formed the Legislative Advisory Council, I know that's a lot of work that you all do for advocacy on our behalf, and I just want to thank all of you for that work. Tony, my question real quick is, and you said it as well, the first one that we have about predictable funding, you know, we have the same thematics around the inflation indexing and so on. My question, Tony, is, you know, it's a 20-year problem, and I suppose with a $7 billion surplus, you probably have our best chance to get some of that with that money, possibly. And my question is, are we doing anything differently as part of our advocacy this time around to get a possibly different result with possibly the best chance we have to do something differently in 20 years than we haven't in the past?
I don't know that, that I know that we're doing anything extremely differently heading into this session, again, it's not a funding session. I would say that we've been fairly successful in years past. Last year, getting, you know, we were not asking for more than 2.4 or 2%, so these solutions are just, they're not single-session solutions. Fix, you can't fix special education, you can't fix a 9% lag in inflation over 20 years in one session. So I guess what we're looking for is some acknowledgement that there's an issue that we need to, we need to figure out how we're going to move it forward. The state convened another committee, and I know Art loves these committees, he got to serve on one a few years ago, but they had the preeminent person in Minnesota Finance, Tom Melcher, as part of this group, they came up with a plan to fix some of the inequities and how to move forward, how to phase in. They've got answers to a lot of these in the work that they did. Whether, whether anybody has the legislative will to pick any of that up and go for it, I don't know. But in answer to your question, and I'd certainly be open to suggestions if people, if people have that, our district does not have a dedicated lobbyist at the Capitol, other districts do, I'm not suggesting that we need to, but, you know, the large urban districts both have people at the Capitol all the time, and O'Kehanipin has that. I think that has probably served those districts well in terms of getting dollars for specific programs for those districts. We unearthed something in our meeting at Rosemont Middle last week, both Virgil Jones and Violetta were at the meeting and talked, we were talking about the Teacher of Color Grant program, and I think it was about $6.5 million that was awarded. Over half of those dollars were awarded to Minneapolis and St. Paul. None of those dollars were awarded to District 196.
None of them were awarded to 196.
Right, the fourth-largest district in the state. So Representative Kosnick, our Republican friend from Lakeville, he said, let's do something about that. Let's approach who we need to and talk about increasing that level of funding, because the $6.5 million compared to requests of $23 million to start grow your own programs for teachers of color in districts. But if, if the total was 24 or 22 million in requests, 6 million, 6.5 was the amount of funding available, two districts took over half of that. So, there's a need, there's just not the, not the funding there for it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Again, thank you to the LAC for all the work and all the work that you, all the information that you've provided them, looking over the district and our needs. This is nicely done, and it was nice in the forum that we were at at Rosemont the other day, of talking about, at the very basic level of what are we providing for the kids in safety, and, and providing basic needs and providing more mental health initiatives, and we are lucky in this district where we are, because before the pandemic, we had the election and we put in more counselors, a lot of districts haven't, but we could certainly use more and more teachers to help our students, because this has been, the last two years has been crazy for kids, and it's hard for them to be back. So, thank you very much, thank you a lot. With that, we have a motion by Joel and a second by Corey to approve the legislative priorities. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes on a 7-0 vote, thank you. That won't be the last time we'll see Tony and the legislative priorities. Next up is the award sale of general obligation school building refund bonds. Christopher Anya Robshaw is going to introduce Jody Vespa from Aylers, and she is always the girl with the good information.
She is. Chairman Agneson, again, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, I'm here to present Jody Vespa. I'm not going to take any of her thunder, but she has some great news to share with us, so, Jody?
I know, and if people looked ahead...
Oh, you can look ahead, yes. All right, so, as I mentioned last month, when we looked at our pre-sale estimates, refunding of school district bonds is similar to refinancing a home mortgage, although the savings can't be kept by the district for your budget, it has to be passed on as a reduction in taxes to your taxpayers through reduced debt service levies. So I'm sure they'll be excited to see that. So you'll see that we're refunding the 2023 through 25 maturities of two bond issues that were issued in 2012 and 2013. And you did have, go through the rating process, Christopher provided information for the rating, Mark Stotts participated in the call, and both did a very excellent job of representing the district, so resulted in that nice high AA2 credit enhanced rating, as well as the underlying rating. You received nine bids, and the low bid was Fifth Third Securities out of Cincinnati, Ohio, with a .59% rate. And you'll see in our notes at the bottom of the page there, we were estimating a .83% rate, and we thought that was nice and low, so we're super excited to see you get that nice low bid from Fifth Third Securities. So I'll go through some information, on the second page, we summarize the savings by each of those bond issues. So we were planning on savings last month when we put together the estimates of about $506,000 on the 2012C refunding portion, and we actually are saving $548,000 on that. For the 2013A, we had projected a savings of about $73,000, and we're saving about $95,000. So I will go through the attachments, and they're labeled at the bottom with the page numbers, so the first two pages include your bid tab. So you'll see on attachments, page one, that low bidder, Fifth Third Securities, with a true interest rate of .5931, and look at the next bidder, so this is exciting for us in our office. So JP Morgan was at a .5932, so out to the fourth decimal point, so super exciting to see that. And then you'll see bids from Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, Bank of America, Merrill Lynch out of New York, Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, FHN out of Memphis, Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, and then on the next page, Baird out of their Red Bank, New Jersey office, and Keybank out of Cleveland, Ohio. So the high bid was a .7281, which still is lower than what we were estimating last month, so great to see that, and great to see bids from really throughout the country. We'd like to see at least three bids, so seeing nine bids was also very exciting for us at our office this morning. The next pages then, attachments, page three through page 10, then are the same financial schedules that we included in your pre-sale report at the December 13th meeting, they're just updated now for the sale results. So our favorite pages are pages seven and 10, those show the savings for each of the bond issues. And then at the bottom of the page, so the attachments, page 11, is the press release that you, that was issued from Moody's after our conversation with them. You'll see there's some language in there related to your certificates of participation also, so that, those certificates will be issued to finance your Silver Bell Learning Center, we talked about that transaction during your December 13th meeting also, but those certificates will be sold in early February, and will close later in February on those. We're still waiting for one more step, I believe, in the City of Eagan approval process for that. So, but just to make sure that we could be as efficient as possible with the rating process, Moody's is issuing their reports for both of the debt issues at this point in time. So then, the detailed credit opinion is on pages 16 to 23, and those are the last pages of the report. And then finally, you do have a resolution drafted by Andrea Hedke, your bond attorney from Dorsey &amp; Whitney, so that is what you'll be considering tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to that resolution also.
With that, this is an action item this evening, so before we move into questions and comments, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Joel, a second by Sutchen. Questions from the audience? My question, if I was in the audience, is when do I see as a taxpayer, when do I see money back from this round, this is, what, about 650...
Yep, so it'll be about $340,000 over the next two years, so taxes payable in '22 have already been set by the board, so the savings will be reflected in taxes payable '23 and '24.
There you go. Now you'd know if you were the audience asking that question, when would you see that money? Any questions from the board? Sutchen.
A 25% discount is pretty incredible, so well done on that.
Thank you, yes, we are very happy with the results, yep.
They all nerded out. Exactly. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Joel and a second by Sutchen to approve the award sale of the general obligation school bond or school building refund bonds as outlined. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes on a 7-0 vote? I should have said all in favor, say yippee, because that's great news. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much.
That's amazing interest rate.
Very much appreciate the opportunity to be of service and really happy with the results.
Thank you. And we're glad you're here. We're always glad you're here. You usually always bring us good news.
Knock on, let's keep knocking on wood, yes, exactly.
Thank you, Jody. Next, we'll move on to Policy 408, the Minnesota OSHA COVID-19 Minnesota Employee Vaccination, Testing and Face Covering. We'll call up Jill Coyle, and she'll go over the Policy 408.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the Board and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with a proposed new policy, Policy 408, MinOSHA COVID-19 Employee Vaccination, Testing and Face Covering. It's a mouthful. The administration recommends the adoption of this policy as a result of the emergency temporary standard on vaccination and testing announced by the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, in November of 2021. The emergency temporary standard is commonly referred to as the ETS, and that's how I'll refer to it through the rest of this presentation. The ETS was adopted by the Minnesota Occupational Safety and Health Administration, MinOSHA, on January 3 of 2022, and it is subject to enforcement as of today, January 10. The ETS requires Minnesota employers of 100 or more employees, including school districts, to either require employees to be vaccinated against COVID-19 or to require unvaccinated, to collect vaccination status of all employees, and to require unvaccinated employees to test for COVID-19 on a weekly basis and to comply with some additional face covering requirements. The administration recommends the second option, the collection of vaccines or to require testing of the unvaccinated. Employers are required to adopt, implement, and enforce a policy that complies with the ETS. Proposed Policy 408 does that by addressing required components of the ETS, including the collection of employee vaccination information, the requirement of COVID-19 testing for the unvaccinated, for unvaccinated employees, I should say, and the requirement of face coverings for unvaccinated employees. Note that all employees are currently subject to another face covering policy, policy, actually, Regulation 708.7 AR COVID-19 masks. So this would be in addition to those requirements that are already in place for all employees. Policy 408 also covers mandatory reporting of an employee's COVID-19 diagnosis or positive test. It addresses allowable exemptions, and it includes employee notification requirements. For clarity's sake, primarily for the audience, I want to note that this is a policy that affects employees and not students in terms of, to whom it applies to. As many of you have likely read in the news, the ETS has been the subject of legal challenges. Most recently, it was the subject of a Supreme Court hearing that was held last Friday. That Supreme Court hearing was to determine whether or not a stay should be put in place on the ETS while the challenges, while the legal challenges are ongoing in the lower courts. We have yet to see a ruling from the Supreme Court on that. However, I want to clarify that the proposed Policy 408 is drafted so that it will only be in effect if the ETS is legally required and not subject to a stay, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. Finally, I want to note that the policy proposed was adapted from a policy drafted by a local school law firm. We are appreciative to them for that service. And I also want to note that this policy is presented to you tonight as other action rather than following the usual policy pathway of a first and a second reading. We do have a regulation in place that allows us to adopt a policy in one reading in emergency circumstances or when law requires that something be done right away, as this one does. With that, I give you Policy 408 for your review and action tonight.
Again, as Jill Coyle said, this is an action item this evening, so we'll look for a motion and a second.
Move approval?
Second.
A motion by Joel, a second by Corey. Are there questions or comments from the audience? Come in.
Good evening, it's me again, Jake Rallender, parent and resident of the district. I oppose you adopting this rule at this time for the simple reason of you're going to be asking your teachers and staff, when we already are suffering from retention and morale issues, to be held to this much higher standard when they're working in a classroom that doesn't have to abide by that same standard. You know, I have two students in the district. They're not required to meet any of these requirements. You're not required to know their vaccination status. I'm also concerned of, how are you going to protect the identity of a teacher when they have to present their vaccination status and now are subject to increased testing, increased masking, and are going to be subject to possibly reprisal from their fellow coworkers? I can speak with 100% fact when I say, I was apprised against, while a district employee, my first year here, when I was delayed in getting my flu shot. I was harassed by numerous coworkers to get it, and this is far more severe than just a flu shot. So again, the privacy of one's vaccination status is theirs and theirs alone. I don't believe it's anyone else's business. I believe in medical freedom and medical choice. The truth is, is why I am vaccinated, it's none of your business. And that's just what I believe, and I believe that with the court ruling still pending, that we should table this and we should wait. That's the current status anyways, and I just think that'd be doing the community a big favor by just wait and see what the courts are going to decide, and then we can make an educated decision based on that. Thank you.
Come ahead, we've got a couple extra questions. But Jill, can I just, because this might keep coming up. This policy is not going to go into effect if the Supreme Court says, no way, Jose. This policy is, is this policy going to be alive tomorrow?
It will be alive tomorrow unless the court grants a stay, in which case it will not be enforceable in the district. And I guess I should also point, this standard, this MinOSHA standard, is currently in effect. So to fail to adopt the policy would put us at violation of OSHA and subject to fines and penalties.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yes, come in.
Hello, I'm Judy Hayes. I'm a speech-language pathologist in this school district. I work with children that are three years old. They cannot be vaccinated. There are many children in our district who can't be vaccinated for many different reasons, and there's many adults and employees that work in our district. It is important that if you're choosing not to be vaccinated, definitely your choice, that you're tested on a weekly basis. This virus can go anywhere really fast, and we don't know who it's going to affect and who it's going to kill. It is okay to take a test every week, and is it okay to be vaccinated too? I encourage us to follow through with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on, come on up. Oh, there we go, yep, you, and then we'll go to you.
Hi, School Board. This is my first time coming to a meeting, and I found it very informative, and I plan on attending more in the future. My name is Carrie Flugsoth. I am a school bus driver of almost 10 years of experience. I'm a mother of six children. I have 11 grandchildren. I have kids that are going to high school, grandkids that are going to middle school, grandkids that are going to elementary. I have one four-year-old who's attending kindergarten connections, and he loves it. I am for passing this ruling. I believe that everyone has their free right to decide if they want to have it. We all have learned that the vaccine decreases our chances of a horrible hospitalization, ending up on a vent, potentially dying. As it was stated, we can have the vaccine, we could still get it, we could still die. But it decreases our chances. It promotes us staying open for us having jobs, for our kids to continue learning. I drive special ed bus. I've driven it for almost my entire career. I come from 15 years of registered nursing and labor and delivery, where there's a ton of teaching. This gives me an opportunity for teaching. And we teach about masks. I have three-year-olds that ride my bus. They have infant-sized masks that they wear. You know what these little short people? They wear their masks. They like their masks. So I'm all for passing it. Thank you very much.
Yes, next, thank you.
So, I oppose the idea of implementing a vaccination for anybody, honestly. Being someone who's already had COVID, dealt with it fine, not vaccinated, and I don't think that we should ever force anybody to be vaccinated. There's a lot of data that's coming out, you know, especially with what's happened with COVID. Supposedly, the CDC director just came out and said, what, 75% of people that were guided from COVID had four underlying comorbidities. Okay, so the information out there, Fauci was just on television talking about how all the children that are being put in hospitals didn't go there for COVID. They were tested for COVID, right, and they had PCR tests, well, it's known to be faulty. So this is information that's out there, and the television is telling anybody this stuff, and the information's out there and accurate. You can go to the CDC website, and it lists many issues that the vaccinations are causing. Like 75,000 people have issues, you know what I mean? If you look at the VAERS reports, the information's out there, people, and my children, I have three children in the school, 196th district, a six-year-old forced to wear a mask, come on. It lowers their oxygen level, that's fact. Okay, we're breathing our own breath. I mean, after you're breathing out, this isn't good for us. And it's like, I just got in trouble at my daughter's school, my 14-year-old. We have a 10-year-old, a 14-year-old, a 6-year-old. Because I went in there, and they said, well, you have to put your mask on. I said, I'm not going to do it. And they said, they made me stand outside. I just, I think that the longer that we, well, you folks who are in the position of power to help us, you know, civilians and citizens, we pay taxes, you know, I'm just, I'm asking to really legitimately think about this, why you would force anybody, anybody to, I mean, tell anybody what the vaccination status is, it's not right. I think there's plenty of information that's still going to come out about the vaccines. They're brand new. There's a lot of issues. I don't think, I mean, I don't know to care if anybody has or not, I'm not judging. I just really think that we need to really look at this, you know? Really look at this whole situation. I'm tired of the children wearing masks. It's unhealthy, the masks, and then...
My name is Kim Bauer, and I don't have much to add to what Jacob and the last gentleman just said, but I am also opposed to 408. I believe these are political science. I don't believe that they are real science, and I think that getting healthy is going to be a better investment than anything that we could do with these vaccine, these mandates, the pressure that you're applying to people who just have conscious and religious and other reasons to not be masked or vaccinated. There's just, like you said, it's too new, and we do know that there are preventative measures that can be taken that are not forced mandates on people, and I also want to know what the staffing impact is going to be after the mandate is passed. It's going to be straight-to-distance learning. We know that that's the truth. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And is that seven? Okay.
Hi, I'm Marcus Johnson. Got a couple kids in the school district. Just a quick question. If, will the, will the district comply with the five-day quarantine time that the CDC has now implemented? Because I haven't heard anything about it so far.
Yes, please.
I can answer that. We have been following, all along, we followed CDC and MDAH. So with that change this week, our team's taken a look at that, and my expectation is we'll go to that five-day.
Yeah, as soon as we're done with the audience. That was speaker number five. We've got two more, openings for two more speakers. Oh, that was six, we got one more speaker.
I just wanted to point out that they are following that five-day, the kids on the bus.
Okay. Good, thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to board members with questions and comments. Bianca.
Just a clarifying point, right, that the ETS has two options, one which is requiring vaccination for all staff and no testing option, but that you are proposing that we do the employee choice option, which is saying that employees can choose to not be vaccinated but have to be tested weekly, correct?
That's exactly right. So we have two choices under the law, and only two choices, and we have elected to recommend the more flexible choice.
And that this goes into effect, you need to be in compliance with the State of Minnesota OSHA today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? And it will go out of effect if the Supreme Court decides otherwise. So, with that, we've got a motion by Joel, a second by Corey to approve Policy 408, the Minnesota OSHA COVID-19 Employee Vaccination, Testing and Face Covering, as outlined in Policy 408. All of those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that passes on a 7-0 vote. Next up, we've got board members and superintendent updates. Board members with items they'd like to update us on today. Joel.
I just want to take this opportunity to welcome Sakadine and Bianca to the Board. I'm very much looking forward to working with both of you. I think it's a great thing. We're adding some diversity to the Board. We're adding some new voices, and I think that, you know, this is just going to be a great Board going forward. We've been a great Board, no offense to anyone who's served in the past, but I'm just really excited for what's ahead for the Board and for the district with the two of you on board.
Yes, welcome. Sutchen.
To add to that, I also want to re-welcome Art on the Board. From not having families show up to not being acknowledged, I wanted to give him a hug, but, so, nice to have you back.
Any other board members with items they'd like to report? We'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay, I just have a couple quick updates. It's January, so that means we're already starting to think about next school year. So in that vein, just a reminder that February 9 is the deadline for parents to submit application for their child to attend Valley Middle School of STEM next year. The application period for elementary magnet schools ended earlier this month. All elementary applications submitted after the deadline will be put on a waiting list. Magnet school enrollment is determined by lottery of the applications received. For more information about magnet schools and the application process, visit the magnet schools page on District196.org. And the priority enrollment window for parents to submit an application for their child to enroll in 196 online for the 2022-23 school year is happening now. Families received an email earlier tonight with more information about submitting an application for our fully virtual K-12 online school. The priority enrollment window closes February 4. For more information about 196 online and the application process, visit 196online.district196.org.
And that's it?
And that's it, thank you very much. We've come to the end of our agenda this evening. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is right back here on February 14. With that, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Submoved. Second.
A motion by Corey and a second by Joel. All in favor of adjournment, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned.